And good evening. Welcome to the Mayor and City Council meeting for the month of March. We'll begin with our Pledge of Flag. I'll ask Councilman Haynes to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge of Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Let the records reflect that all council members are present and accounted for this evening. We're going to begin with our reading of our closed session record from Wednesday evening. On March 8th, 2023, the vote was taken at 8:02 PM to adjourn the regular meeting and enter into closed session. It was passed unanimously unanimously by the four members of council. After a 10-minute recess, we reconvened in closed session. In accordance to the Maryland Open Meetings Act, Title 10, Governmental Procedures, Subtitle V, Meetings, Section 3, 305B, this meeting was closed in order to discuss, to consult with council, to obtain legal advice. The topics discussed were those of Maryland Department of the Environment Enforcement Action. Those present at the closed session were all above noted, being myself and the four members of council, city manager Weprick, Clerk Cowman, and virtually were attorney Gallow and engineer Brian Lubinow. Actions taken at the closed session, there were none. Motion to adjourn was at 9:45 PM by Mayor Portem Fuller with a second from Councilman Foster, and carried unanimously for to nothing. Mr. Attorney, does that satisfy the reading of the closed session record?
Yes, it does.
All right. With that, we're going to bring up for approval of the minutes the February 8th, February 13th regular meetings, the February 22nd budget workshop, and also the March 8th closed session. May I have a motion to approve, please? And may I have a second, please? Okay, I do wish to request an amendment to the record of closed meeting that the time reflect 8:02 PM when the vote was taken to enter into. Is there any objection from the council on that amendment? All right, any other discussion on the meeting minutes as presented and amended? All right. On the motion to approve the minutes as amended from Councilman Haynes with a second from Councilwoman Foster, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Thank you very much. I'll now ask members of council if they have any conflicts of interest on anything on the agenda this evening.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Haynes, please state your conflict.
I'll be abstaining from both the Ethics and Election Board appointments. Not comfortable voting to appoint members to a board which will oversee an election during one in which I am a candidate.
All right, with that, Councilman Haynes has stated he will be abstaining from the appointments to Election Board and Ethics Commission this evening. Any objections from the council on that? Any additional conflicts of interest? All right. Hearing none, we'll move into our resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. First, we have ordinance 01-2023. This is the fiscal year 2023-2024. Operating budget up for introduction this evening. I will entertain a motion to introduce, please. May I have a second to that motion? Is there any discussion on that? All right, hearing none on the motion to introduce ordinance 01-2023 fiscal year 23-24 operating budget from Mayor Portem Fuller with a second from Councilwoman Foster. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Likewise, I will request a motion introduced on ordinance 02-2023. This is the fiscal year 2023-2024 water sewer rate, which is projected to remain the same. May I have that motion to introduce, please?
Motion to introduce ordinance number 02-2023.
May I have a second to that motion?
I will second.
All right, any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all in favor of introducing ordinance 02-2023, the fiscal year 23-24 water sewer rate. Signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay? All right. Finally, for introduction this evening, we have ordinance 03-2023, the fiscal year 2023-2024 tax rate, which again is expected to remain the same as previous. May I have a motion to introduce, please? So moved. May I have a second to that one? And any discussion? All right, hearing no discussion on the motion to introduce ordinance 03-2023 fiscal year 23-24 tax rate from Councilman Haynes with a second from Mayor Portem Fuller. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay? All right, those three items will be up for public hearing next month at our Wednesday workshop, which is to be held on May the 5th? April, excuse me, April the 5th? Yes, let's try not to go back into the future. All right, April 5th will be the public hearings for those ordinances, and then they'll be up for adoption at the April business meeting. All right. Up for adoption this evening, however, we have ordinance 04-2023, the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget amendment number two. I will entertain a motion, and please specify your motion. Motion to adopt? All right, may I have a second to that, please? All right, any discussion on this budget amendment? All right, hearing none on the motion to approve ordinance 04-2023 fiscal year 22-23 budget amendment number two from Councilman Haynes with a second from Councilwoman Cheney. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Lastly, up for adoption this evening, we have resolution 2023-04, our monthly water allocation for the month of March. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve resolution 2023-04. Guess that should be the other way around. Order allocation for March.
Resolutions are year first, ordinances are number first, yeah. Otherwise, I'd be completely confused. Do I have a second to that motion, please? Very good. Any discussion whatsoever? All right, hearing no discussion on the motion to approve resolution 2023-04 water allocation for March from Councilwoman Foster with a second from Mayor Portem Fuller. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay? Very good. We'll move into our city manager report. Mr. Weprick, what do you have for us this evening?
Nothing to add since Wednesday, thank you.
Nothing since Wednesday. Do we have questions for the city manager on his report or the departmental reports as presented? All satisfied? Feeling good? We'll go into our legal report. Mr. Gallow, what do you have for us this evening, sir?
A follow-up from last week. We are now going to plan for the Syrian settlement at some day next week, so we can hope it's going to be consummated at that point in time. I've herded all the cats into one room, so we're getting closer, and I hope that at the next meeting I can report it's done.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Gallow on that legal report update? All right, thank you, sir, for that. Upper approval this evening under new business. We'll begin with our monthly financial report. I'll entertain a motion. May I have a second to that motion, please?
Second.
And any discussion? All right, hearing none on the motion to approve the monthly financial report from Mayor Portem Fuller with a second from Councilwoman Foster. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? All right, likewise, I'll request the same for the accounts payables. May I have a motion, please? Motion to approve. May I have a second to that motion?
I will second.
And any discussion? All right, hearing none on the motion to approve the accounts payables from Councilman Haynes with a second from Councilwoman Cheney. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay? Next, we have item number three, Maryland Department of the Environment settlement offer. If you remember, we were briefed on this Wednesday evening and discussed in closed session with our legal counsel regarding this. So I'm going to ask Mr. Weprick, what information would you like from us this evening?
Well, as you're aware from the email that was forwarded today, the proposed settlement does cover violations through the end of 2022. We did see the letter from Senator Reedy, so at this point, we just need to refine our response, our next response to the Department of the Environment. If we want to simply say that our senator has taken an interest, and we would like to wait until a meeting can be scheduled for this discussion, we can craft something along those lines.
All right, council, how does that feel? I think that's a good idea.
Yes, it seems kind of backwards to offer a settlement and then have him.
Have him be involved.
Yes, be involved at the same time.
All right, so direction from council was the city will draft a letter stating the interest of Senator Reedy in this and ask for additional time to work with him. If you recall, his letter also asked for an extension of time while he gets caught up on the matter. All right, so be it. Next, we have this evening, I wish to make some appointments to the election board, reappointing a couple and adding one. I would like to reappoint Ms. Sue Billings, Mr. Bill Kennedy, Ms. Judy Ferbay, and also add Ms. Bart Pedalbridle to serve on the election board this year. If you see fit, I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
Very good. May I have a second to that motion, please? I'm sorry, who was that?
Mine.
Thank you. All right, any discussion on those? With Councilman Haynes' abstention, we are down to the three ladies up here to make this decision, okay? Very good. On the motion to approve the four appointments to the election board, one the motion from Councilwoman Foster, second from Mayor Portem Fuller, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay? That'll go down as a 301. Thank you. Appointment to Ethics Commission. With information received since last Wednesday, I've decided to withdraw the nomination for David Bowie to that, and that would still leave us a seat. I'd like to fill that seat. With that, I have interest from a gentleman named Thomas Latella. I believe I sent you his paperwork earlier, so if you see fit to do so, I would like a motion to approve that nomination.
Motion to approve.
May I have a second to that, please?
Second.
And any discussion? All right. All in favor of the appointment to the Ethics Board on the motion from Mayor Portem Fuller, second from Councilwoman Foster, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay? All right. Next, you received a draft from Councilman Haynes of his County Transportation Priorities Letter of Support. I've reviewed it myself after the changes we made the other night, and we'll be looking for approval from council to submit that to the county. I'll entertain that motion. So moved? Very good. May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
And is there any discussion?
You said there were, you made changes to what we got?
No, the changes were prior to Wednesday night.
Prior to that, fine.
Yes, so this reflects all the revisions that Councilman Haynes and I made to it prior to Wednesday.
It looks good to me.
I think so. Councilman Haynes, I appreciate your work on that.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. And on that motion from Councilman Haynes with a second from Councilwoman Foster, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay? All right, I'm going to throw on one more item of new business this evening, based on the email we received regarding the home occupation in Meads Crossing. I want to discuss that as a council, not just, well, not that specifically, but Community Village, which just seems to be a thorn in my side. I'm troubled with that ordinance, that the designation Community Village is brought on by a developer, who of course, they do it for the express purpose of higher density. Is that correct?
I think that's the carrot for them.
Okay. And as a part of that, decisions like this impact those who live in that development in perpetuity, that being prohibited uses of special home occupations. Am I correct? That is the only zone that has that prohibition. All the rest are subject to Board of Appeals. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. That seems seems wrong to me. I feel like in reality, is Community Village really that much different than other places? That a home occupation shouldn't at least be considered by the Board of Appeals? Because they look at everything like parking and and all those things anyway. Is there a specific reason you believe that it's included as prohibited?
I think this just goes back to the original vision of the Community Village that has really not been fulfilled by
Right.
what we've seen. I think, I don't think we have had any issues with our original Community Village, Carol Vista, along those lines. But I think that with Meads Crossing, unfortunately, the developer did not incorporate a number of things into their neighborhood, their homeowners association documents, leading people to believe that certain things were permitted that were not permitted. So, and this is one that, you know, was, I think the HOA documents were not aligned with our code. So
Have we
therefore, people didn't, you know, didn't realize what they were, what they were moving
Right.
into.
And to this date, have we received
Much like the sheds.
Right, have we received their HOA documents at all?
They're recorded in the land records.
Okay.
Question.
Councilwoman, yes.
Do we compare or get a chance to compare HOA documents against our codes?
Our focus is on the financial structure for whenever there's an HOA that is going to own and maintain property, we're supposed to be able to review those covenants to make sure, and I
That they're in line.
That they're, that they're in line, and that we're not going to be looking, I believe, at a situation where the HOA goes belly up and the city ends up having to accept open space, as happened many, many years ago. And I'll defer to the city attorney. I saw his camera come on for a second there.
Well, I think he got kicked off and just joined back in.
I tried to hit to join in there, and that before these get recorded, they have to be approved by the attorney, not the attorney generals, the Secretary of State's office at the state of Maryland. So we get the first look at it, and then it goes there. And so as the city manager said, there's, there's definitely a review process that goes on, but quite frankly, these documents are almost cookie cutter, so there isn't a lot that deals with zoning and specific things as related to any individual town's code. That would be something that we would need to push a developer in the future to say, compare this to our code in advance and have some discussions. Right now, it's largely administrative, so we don't get to that point.
So at this point, okay, let me ask this question. I'll ask it, Mr. Weprick, do you see a compelling reason for us to prohibit special home occupations in Community Village as a whole?
Not as a whole.
Not as a whole.
I do have concerns with what we're seeing with some of the community, well, with one of the community villages regarding parking.
Right.
And the concern of adding commercial uses in there is potentially going to exacerbate parking concerns that we already have in the community. But, no, it's, it's, you know, I think, I think Community Village was envisioned to be something that we really haven't seen on the ground yet.
I agree with you. And again, I feel like this is, the more we get into Community Village and the more we see them, and I have a feeling this is probably going to be the only types of things we see in terms of large scale, large scale development in the city. Consider between Meads and then the three potentials in the next, I don't know how many years are all aiming for Community Village. So as part of our exercise of tightening this up, this is one part I need, I think we need to take action on sooner rather than later. Now, what we did change was add to this back in August, September, that we can modify the DARA to reflect changes to this section.
We have done that, but at this point, the developer is not the principal in the HOA any longer. The developer is wrapping up the project, so
Right.
I don't know that we still can
Right.
At this point, the developer owns very little out there, so the homes have all been deeded to property owners, so we can't really enter into an agreement with one entity like we could before the homes were sold.
Like we did with sheds and such. If we struck the language about special home occupations, are HOAs permitted to prohibit them themselves?
The HOAs can always be more restrictive than us. They just can't be less.
But they also can't be contrary in terms of complete opposite. Is that correct?
For example, the HOA can't say you can put up a 10-foot fence in your front yard. Our code says you can only put up a 4-foot high fence, so they can't be less restrictive than us.
Okay.
They could say you can only put up a 3-foot fence. They can be more restrictive.
Okay.
But they can't go the opposite. I will throw a thought out regarding Community Village, and that is, if we are just looking for a mechanism, so I believe the density is the key piece, but it also allows a variety of housing dwelling types.
Right.
So most of our undeveloped land within the city limits is R-10,000. We only allow single-family dwellings, single-family detached dwellings as a permitted use in R-10,000.
Right.
So if we want to entertain other dwelling types, that could be done through just a code text amendment to the R-10,000 district. If that is the desire. I think Community Village, because of the apprehension of anything but the single-family dwelling that we've seen over the last 30 years or so, as, as many of you know, we've, we had townhome communities develop, and they didn't end up after 20 years being the ideal neighborhoods in a number of regards, and the city sort of shied away from allowing them and made it very difficult to do that. Community Village was a way to offer some variety of housing types with the caroty, carrot of a density bonus in order to get something that would be above and beyond the typical cookie cutter subdivision. So the developer gets to do more lots, but they're supposed to be nicer aesthetically pleasing neighborhoods, you know, heavily landscaped, smaller streets, more traditional neighborhood, and it's supposed to be a very, very attractive neighborhood. And I think it has been kind of whittled away in the last 10 years to what we see now. And not that, not that, you know, these communities won't still be nice communities, but they're not, they're not going to be the, the I don't think they're fulfilling the vision of the Community Village overlay.
So under R-10,000, they don't get the same density opportunities. Is that correct?
Sure.
Because lots are
Right, so if, if, you know, if we're if we're looking for more units, more housing units on the same footprint of land, zoning changes are an option. You could change the zoning, you know, with our comprehensive plan update to a zoning that requires a smaller lot size.
Like this R-75.
Like an R-75.
Right.
Or if you really want to get smaller, R-6. I mean, it's not a huge difference in the square footage, but R-6 is the district that allows a variety of housing types by right. R-75 is still primarily single families, and then it allows some uses as special exceptions. R-10 is more restrictive in that, I believe, and I don't have the code in front of me.
I do.
So
What would you like to know?
I believe single-family dwellings is the only permitted use under residential in R-10.
Yes. Unless you count cemeteries as residential. I'm kidding. Yes, single-family detached dwellings.
So, you know, so some zoning code changes, and again, you know, it depends upon what, what the city is trying to accomplish with it.
Right.
And the original Community Village idea, I think, was, okay, we'll take, we'll take a chance on these, you know, projects that are not your average, your typical, single-family detached dwellings, but we're going to put all these extra rules on top of it to make sure that it doesn't turn into something that we regret.
Right, and Community Village also gives us a crack at the aesthetics
Correct.
of the, of the housing, yeah.
Right.
Question? Please, sir. Yep, you were going to say something? Nope, go ahead, please.
So before we continue that conversation, I do want to ask, for the homeowner who sent us this email, what can we do tonight to solve their issue?
Well, that's going to be the next thing that, that I want to discuss. And this is kind of our segue into that. Is there a going back to the original question? I don't know. Mr. Gallow, you have your camera on. What do you have for us this evening?
Well, I was ready to answer Mr. Haynes's question. I mean
Please do.
The, the reality is, there's nothing you can do tonight that you're going to solve this problem. To do something, you're going to have to change the zoning code. How you change it, you don't have to take on the big issue of Community Village. You could take on the small issue of taking out home occupations, the, the part that's being banned right now. But for you to do that, you have to have a zoning ordinance drafted in front of you. It's got to go to the planning commission after you introduce it. It's got to have a public hearing, which is advertised two weeks in advance, and then you have to vote on it. So, you know, best case scenario, if you said, we want to make this happen, you're talking about two months from now, maybe.
Right.
So, so that's the quick fix, and maybe that's enough. I mean, maybe that is, but the reality of what you're asking the planning commission to talk about are is, of course, everybody wants to have businesses and say you can do things in your home, but these developments were set up, think Carol Vista. I mean, could, do you want to have a situation where you have traffic coming down these streets that are potentially private streets? That you have parking issues on one side? All those things that are, you know, that need to be thought out. That's what your planning commission really needs to think about. So I think it's highly unlikely that they would take it on the same day of their meeting and give you a recommendation. They'll want to talk about it. So you're probably now looking at three months. So there's no quick solution to help this individual.
Right.
So I'm going to play devil's advocate for a moment and just give you another scenario. So what if I buy a property that has this beautiful four-car garage out back, because I've always wanted to open up an automotive service business? And I buy this house and I invest my life savings in it. And then I go to get my zoning certificate for my new business, and the zoning administrator tells me that I can't do that because it's not allowed by code. Do we change the code? So it may be a little bit of an extreme example, but I just would urge caution on jumping in, making code amendments because we get, somebody can't do what they want to do. And I'm not trying to say anything specifically against the folks who emailed on this particular issue. I'm just offering a caution to not react and change code. issue, I'm just offering a caution to not react and change code without some thought and without some discussion and consideration and taking into consideration for a zoning ordinance, at least what the planning commission has to say as well.
I, I hear that point. But I, I think it, the email especially still merits a discussion about the prohibition of home occupation.
Councilman, let me speak to this. What we're talking about is home occupation, home occupation special, which specifically states does not include automotive repair and similar type uses. So what we're asking is that it have similar a similar process to those of other zones, which would still be Board of Appeals, who would take into account the parking, the traffic, all of those things. Is that is that unnecessary, does council believe? To make it match the other zones? Right now, it only doesn't match because the developer wanted to build more houses.
I, I think it should match the other zones, that's
And that's all I'm asking for. I'm not saying we should just open it up and allow all home occupations. I just feel that it should match everything else in the city, and I've brought up before, the challenge for people looking at our maps is they don't know that they live in a Community Village.
Right.
They look at a map, and right now, it would say in Meads Crossing that it's R, is it R-10 or R-20 up there? R-10. So if they look up R-10, as far as they're concerned, it's permitted as a special exception. Because as discussed, our maps do not differentiate between Community Village. That's only on paper in our hands, they don't have it.
And kind of to that point, as a side, I want to ask, the community handbook that this person got, was that from Meads or was that from us?
That would have been from Meads.
And so the fact that the community handbook didn't mention that, I think is a really huge issue.
On their part.
Right.
Yeah.
One of the other things that you probably should consider, I mean, you all need to understand, because if we asked you right now, what are the different types of home occupations? I'm not talking about examples, I'm talking about the way our code treats them. There are different types, because where, the way the mayor read that, that is a specific type of home occupation. Before we start deleting and doing things, we should probably talk to you about what that is. Obviously, if you prepare somebody's taxes in your house and they email you everything, you would never even know that is a home occupation. If you, you know, make candles in your house or sell pampered chef and it's never happening at your house, you would never know. But as you get to like the city manager's point, as you get more intensive, closer to the commercial thing, where you have people stopping by and trucks stopping by and materials stopping by, it becomes a problem if the development itself was not laid out for that. And the standard for a special exception is, it's presumed that you can do it there if you can meet the conditions. So you're creating a hearing, which we should have, right? The neighbors should all get an opportunity. But sometimes the development isn't laid out for those things. So my thought is, since you can't do anything tonight, maybe you would task the staff with giving you a, either, I don't know if a presentation is necessary, but a one-page white sheet to show you what types of home occupations we're talking about and some examples that we faced in the past, so you can see how to best do this. Maybe it isn't changing the zoning to prohibit home occupations, maybe it's reclassifying what home occupations are, and then home occupations could apply, if that makes sense. You know, I'm gonna make up the language, you know, you have a first tier, a second tier, and a third tier home occupation. Maybe if you change those and define them, you could more control where they happen, not just in these community villages, but in all the residential areas.
Does the council have appetite to request that of staff?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll by consensus. That's the direction we'll head then. I appreciate the conversation, everybody. And next, we'll go into council member reports. I'll begin with Councilman Haynes, what do you have this evening?
Okay. So Director Mish is continuing to work with two potential alcohol-based businesses, another restaurant or potential restaurant, and a retail store when setting up shop in town. We're very excited to report that the liquor board hearings went favorably for both Finch, Finch Market and Tony's. In May, the Department of Economic Development will be partnering with the Tonnytown Library to present ongoing programs for entrepreneurs who are looking to start a business. And then finally, the Department of Economic Development is furthering its commitment to supporting small business by providing a workshop on March 28th, which will cover items like cash management, improving your chances of getting a loan, merchant services, and business insurance. That is all from me, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Foster, what do you have for us this evening?
Habitat for Humanity moves closer to breaking ground in Tonnytown, hopefully in April. They would like to invite council to the groundbreaking. As soon as we have a date for that, I will let council know.
All right, thank you so much. Mayor Perotam Fuller, what do you have for us this evening?
Okay, the Skate Park Project is proceeding on schedule. We should be planning on having a grand reopening and ribbon cutting near the end of April. The exact date and time will be announced as we get closer, barring any holds. The Memorial Park Expansion Project concept design is gonna be presented at the Athletic Association and Parks and Rec Advisory Board meetings this Wednesday, and also at the March 27th Planning Commission meeting. The plans and 3D renderings will be shown on the screens and the live stream at these meetings. First event for the year is the Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 1st. It's gonna be at Memorial Park, starting at 1:00 PM. The event is free. There will be raffles for Easter baskets and flowers from Cedar Hedge Farm. We'll have free juice and cookies and visits with the Easter Bunny. And then every one of the 4,000 Easter eggs that are being hidden for the hunt has toys or candy inside. So there is plenty for all of the young'uns. And then the very first community flea market is scheduled for Saturday, April 29th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Memorial Park. Interested vendors should contact Lorena by April 7th to reserve a spot, and they are expected to fill up fast, so get those, get those reservations in quickly. I believe that is everything.
All right, thank you, Mayor Perotam. Councilwoman Cheney, what do you have for us this evening?
I do not have anything.
That's right, you're gonna have something next month
I will, yes.
because now you get to sit on Parks and Rec again. All right, I'm going to begin, before I forget, with the report from the Tonnytown Police Department. For February 2023, total dispatch generated calls for service of 326, total citations issued 127, total warnings issued 99, total adult arrests 29, and total juvenile arrests one. Of special note, Acting Chief Major Mitchell had the opportunity to meet with newly appointed Police Accountability Board and Charging Board, along with the other municipal department heads, and Sheriff Dewey's. He states it was very informative and groundwork for the functioning of these boards, and procedures that followed was discussed. Quite some training accomplishments we have for our department. We have all patrol officers took in-service training for criminal gangs awareness. PFC Betcher received Field Training Officer recertification, and Senior Patrol Officer Sakadelis, American Red Cross Adult Pediatric CPR AED First Aid Instructor recert. Specialized training, Senior Patrol Officer Sakadelis Basic Tactical Medical Instructor Training Program. PFC Echols, the NHTSA DWI Detection and Standardized Field Sobriety Testing Training Course. PFC Betcher, the Field Training Officer Refresher Course, and Senior Patrol Officer Sakadelis, American Red Cross Adult Pediatric CPR AED First Aid Recertification. So they've been busy, lots of additional training going on down there. As far as my report, I enjoyed two very good visits to our local elementary schools, Runnymede Elementary and Tonnytown Elementary, to visit their fourth grades, something I'm very happy to do each year. This year, I was able to get in early enough to push the If I Were Mayor essay contest, of which the teachers were extremely excited, and a lot of the students were as well. I will say, both classes were extremely well behaved. It was, it was actually a little bit scary to see them so calm. Why wasn't my fourth grader so calm? But very nice to visit both of them, had a lot of fun, had a lot of great questions. I did attend the mayor's conference in Annapolis, the winter conference. Very good session this year. Had some pretty interesting sessions about economy, some other issues that have plagued municipalities across the state. We did visit the State House, where we met with our delegates and senators, sat in on some of their sessions as well, talked about what's important to us that they could help us out with. Then also had a great reception at the governor's mansion with Governor Moore, kind of getting to know him and what he does. The Legislative Committee for MML that I serve is still kicking. We're just over halfway through the legislative session this year. We'll reconvene again Wednesday morning to discuss what bills are going where and what, how that impacts municipalities across the state. And lastly, update for our search for a new police chief, permanent police chief, we'll say. We have concluded all of the interviews, and now we'll be compiling all the notes and having kind of one or two final meetings to come up with a name to bring to you next month. It's been a very good process, I think. We've had, between Jim, myself, Councilwoman Foster, Clerk Cowman's been in there, as well as the chiefs of Denton and La Plata, we've gotten some really good information out of the candidates. So hopefully you'll have something from me next month on that. And that's all I have for a report this evening. Is there anything additional from council before I plead for adjournment?
There, if I could add to
Yes.
your school visits?
Yes.
The reading of the essays will take place virtually on April 5th. So if any of you can help out with that reading, please let me know, and I will get you the
How are they gonna do that virtually?
I was about to ask.
We just, we've done it, we've done it in person.
Yeah, I had, I thought the same thing, but we did it last year
Okay.
virtually. And, you know, Paula and Sharon set it all up and, you know, log you in.
That was a lot of fun last time, so I might
And, you know, load up the essays, you read a batch of them, make your notes, send it back. It's interesting how they have it set up, but it can be done virtually.
MML has become a wizard at virtual things.
Oh, they are.
Yeah.
Way above me.
Above me, I know. All right, thank you for that. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. May I have a second?
Second.
Without any objection, all in favor of adjournings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Thank you all, have a great night.